I'd like to call to order the Thursday, January twenty sixth, two thousand twenty-three, meeting of the Lake Forest Board of Education. We'll start this evening if you would join me for the Pledge of Allegiance followed by a moment of silence. Thank you. All right, welcome to everyone who has joined in person, as well as those who have joined online. Just a reminder that we are streaming tonight's meeting across the web in minutes, as well as that recording will be posted once they are approved. We do have a full house this evening, which can only mean one thing. We must have a very good recognitions on the docket, which is always a joy. We'll start this evening with a roll call of board members. Dr. Wyatt.
Here.
Ms. McCloskey.
Here.
Mrs. Starkey.
Here.
Vice President Ralph.
Here.
And President Earl Dempsey serving as chair is present. We have all five board members present. Thank you all for being here. Move on to two point four approval agenda, Mr. Ralph. I make a motion we approve the agenda after them. Emotional floor properly seconded. Any questions or discussion on that motion? Seeing none, move to a vote. All those in favor.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries five to zero. Item two point five approval minutes. I make a motion we approve the meeting minutes from the January twelfth meeting.
Second.
Emotional floor properly seconded. Any questions or discussion on that motion? Seeing none, move to a vote. All those in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Same. Motion carries four to zero with one abstention. On to section two point six, recognition presentations. As I alluded to, we do have several this evening. I'll turn it over to Dr. Lucas.
Thank you, President Dempsey. I'd like to introduce Mr. Todd Weller from North Elementary School, and he is going to bring forth our four holiday card artists. Here comes Mr. Weller. Welcome.
Welcome, Mr. Weller.
We're going to start with the holiday card artists first. As I call their names, some of them are here, some of them are not. Angel Andalar, NDR, was our deck winner. I do not believe they are here tonight. For North, we had Rebecca Sherman. For South Elementary, we had three students, The Sean Friend, Ian Santos Burgos, and Christopher Jacobs. For East Elementary, we had Brooklyn Hughes. For Central, we had Chloe Can Daniel. For WT Chipman, we had Carson West. And for Lake Forest High School, we had Anna Thorzold.
Yeah.
Ready to fire awards?
Yes, we can. The next one is the fire prevention winners. Just a quick overview, very quick. It is the oldest of its kind in the United, in North America, as far as we know. It's a partnership between an immunity organization and the school to better the community. And it really started with something that we really push for, which is using your gifts to better the community and better the world. This year was really awesome, going to county awards and seeing ten of the twelve awards in the poster contest, all going to North schools. So there were many other schools from the county there. So that's a pretty awesome thing. We're going to go through them now. All of these students placed at their local.
Sure. I'm really sorry. Can we get a quick picture with you?
Of course.
With the card.
Do we have any of the other teachers that worked with the card contest? I only, one only belongs to me, although I had Anna when she was much shorter. Would there be anybody else here from the schools?
The principal is about to come up.
Any principals in this?
Thanks, Mr. Weller.
Not a problem. Back to the fire winners. All of these students won their local fire competition. They went on to the county competition, and then the winners of the county competition went on to the state competition, which the Felton ones will be acknowledged next week at their award ceremony. So we'll start with Central. We have for fifth grade, first place county, third place state, Ava Zer. For fourth grade, first place county, third place state, Carly Gallo. From North Elementary, her kindergarten, first place county, third place state, Everly Foy. For first grade, first place county, second place state, and just a side note, a return winner, Riley Price. Second grade, third place county, Styler Riley. I know Styler was not here when I lined him up. And then for third grade, second place county, Josephine Weller. Right, for South Elementary, grade one, third place county, Nora Okanuski. Second grade, also third place county, Jace Thomas. Last but not least, from East Elementary, kindergarten, second place county, Nathaniel Lucina. First grade, second place county, Haven Durkey. Second grade, first place county, third place state, Gianna Hutchins. And third grade, first place county, second place state, Adeline Miller. Now, we also have some winners from Central here. We want to acknowledge second place at Felton, Cheyenne Lewis. Third place in the Felton competition, Aubrey Forre. In the fourth grade level, second place at Felton, Samuel Doggy. And third place at Felton, Kennedy Thompson. As I said earlier, those central essay writers and the Felton, the North poster winners will be acknowledged next week at the Felton Awards Ceremony. So they will get their, the last of their three awards ceremonies they're attending for this year, and then we're on to next year. So these are our poster and essay winners for this year.
So I'll just take the opportunity to say from two members of the fire service up here, you know, while we see dwindling numbers in the state and interest in the fire service, we also see dwindling interest in this program, which is the longest running program in the nation, is what Delaware has. So certainly hats off to our educators, our teachers who keep bringing this into our schools, and definitely to our students that are teaching us all how to be safe. So thank you all very much. Keep it up.
Okay, next up, I'm not sure if the students want to, students are welcome to stay. Certainly no pressure. Okay, welcome back, everybody. Next, I'd like to introduce Ms. Mary Boachel and the team from the Lake Forest Community Education Foundation.
Floor is yours.
How are you? I'm gonna stand over here if I can to, you know. No. Thank you. Oh, and I'm Mary Boachel with the Lake Forest Community Education Foundation. Thank you to the board, Dr. Lucas, and members of other communities for coming out today. I'm gonna, I'm talk briefly, so I'm gonna go quickly and hopefully not too fast. I'd like to introduce Marie Cunningham and Donna Sharp. They're also going to help give out the awards. But before we do that, I thought I'd give a summary of our bubble wobble. That's our major fundraiser for those who haven't attended it. We are in our sixth year. And we had a record attendance this year. And I shouldn't say attendance. We had a record registration because several of those people didn't come that day because it was very cold and windy. I was impressed. We had forty-four people show up and register that morning. But it's a fun event. It's a family, family event. We raised ninety-two hundred and seventy-six dollars for, for the foundation, and we had nineteen sponsors, eight, which generated eight hundred, eight thousand, four hundred dollars. That's the largest number of sponsorships we've had since the pandemic. So it's, it's coming back, which we're happy about. The majority of our participants were from Kent County, but we had thirty percent of our, our registration from the Lake Forest community, which was very exciting as well. Our largest team is a very competitive group, had twenty-five participants. They were the South, South Drumsticks. They're gonna be smiling. From Lake Forest South, and it's their second year winning that, that award. And we give out a very large basket of gift cards, you know, throughout, for all the community. It's worth over three hundred dollars, I believe. So it's, it's well worth trying to get friends to come along. Now for the grants, think guys want to come up? Is everybody familiar with the foundation's grant programs? I don't, I'm not gonna So this year, the two thousand three, we gave away seven grants. Our first award winner is Audrey Sue Post and FCC LA members. They were awarded a grant to create a cafe to sell homemade baked goods and coffee to the teachers. The funds raised will benefit the culinary and hospitality program. And we especially like that they are going to work with the art students at the high school to build a backdrop of an ancient Greek cafe. I was gonna tell you what the name of that cafe was, but it was too difficult to work. Is, is this here? Is not, okay. Is there a building administrator who can accept it on her behalf from the high school?
Well, the superintendent.
Yeah.
Our next grant is awarded to Sue and Cliffinger, Hope Bailey Owens, and Gavin Vey. They are awarded a grant to build vocabulary skills for multilingual learners. Especially noteworthy is the collaboration between the elementary school and the middle school. We thought it was great that all the teachers were working together, and Ms. Cliffinger, I believe, is here to receive reward for the groups. And the next award goes to Mr. Weller. He's receiving a grant to create an outdoor environmental education learning area at North Elementary School. We think this is a wonderful opportunity for students to engage in environmental science outside the classroom. The committee is looking forward to coming down to see this.
The turtles are all ready for the Bible, let's go. Just don't give it a Greek name.
The next award goes to Lina Miller from South Elementary. She's receiving a grant for materials for math and reading intervention that will benefit students struggling in reading and math. Lauren West is our next recipient of the grant for decodable books for her intervention reading intervention program at South Elementary School. I'm sorry, intensive reading intervention program. Next is Stacy Zir and the reading interventionist at Central Elementary. She's receiving an award for decodable books to help students with phonics and oral reading fluency. Our last award thing given to Sarah Bushy, Dana Carey, and Makia McNair. They're working with other teachers to develop mindfulness, manage stress, and self-improvement. Funds for the grant will purchase journals for the participating teachers. With this, Ms. Bushy is here to accept the award.
Congratulations.
We, we generally actually give our awards for teach, for I'm calling professionals of the year at orientation. But this year, we did some things a little differently. So we're going to present the three professionals of the year with, with small token of our appreciation for the work that they've done. We're able to give them each four hundred dollars, which we think is hopefully will go towards something wonderful that they're working on. First is the teacher of the year, Lindsay Saxton. The next one is Janet Gerald for behavioral, she's our behavioral. And the last one is our, our educational support professional of the year, Heather Kitchens. Heather is also, for those, you know, I assume all everybody in the audience knows, she received a state award. Heather's the support professional. It's a lot of words. We knew her grant, so we made a little seven thousand, four hundred and twenty-seven dollars, seventy-one cents.
Katie here with me tonight. Part of our in-house work that's being done for the outdoor environment is some of the high school students will be building extensions for the seating. And so we'll actually have some of the high school students providing some of the things that are going to be in our environment. So that's going to be a really exciting opportunity. And she came out here tonight, and I wanted to let her come up quick before we dispersed and dawn. And I look forward, as I said, it should be exciting. Hope everybody can come and check it out.
Also, we get another picture, just the two of them.
Ladies, Mrs. Boachel, Mrs. Cunningham, Mrs. Sharp, would just say thank you again, you know, everything that the Lake Forest Media Education Foundation does. It's a pleasure seeing you here each year doing this, rewarding our staff. We appreciate all your efforts in the community. And we would like to proudly display that.
Yes.
Thank you all.
I want to thank you.
Yeah.
All right, we are up to section two point seven, citizens' participation. Opportunity for members of the public to address the board at each meeting. We did ask that if anyone was wanting to address the board, please sign up at the beginning or sign up at the front there and present the sheet to superintendent's office. Ms. Pickle, do we have anyone on this evening? We don't have anyone signed up this evening. We will reopen for public comment at the beginning of our next meeting. For that, we're going to section three, three point one, city council report, Ms. Claire Ruiz. Welcome, Claire.
Hi. So I'm Claire. I'll be reading over the Lake Forest events, like what's happening at Lake today. So for the FFA, January eleventh, the FFA took forty students to the PA forum show, and we had a great trip. There are also some upcoming events that the FFA will be participating in on February second. Twenty-three students will attend the state FFA Vision Leadership Conference at UD. And February ninth, FFA State Convention Preliminary Competition for Speaking Contest. February sixteen, fifteen juniors and seniors will be attending the Mid-Atlantic Women in AG Conference. For February eighteen to twenty-fifth is National FFA Week. And for February twenty-third is the Meat Evaluation Contest at Sutter Film and Meat Locker. And that's it for FFA, BPA, the Business Professional of America. Professionals of America will have three students competing at the State Leadership Conference in February. JDG, Mr. Moore started a concept in the JDG classroom called Self-Love Fridays, where every Friday, students take time to support each other in a positive way. So far, the students have reported that it is a positive thing for them. The JDG has their ECA competitive, competitive events coming March second and third. Nyla Jones, Casey Bird, and Marcus Russ maybe are selected three to compete. This event highlights public speaking skills, community service skills, and a knowledgeable. And for the class of two thousand twenty-six, be a principal day for a day raffle supporting the freshman class. And this is from January twenty-fourth to February twenty-fourth. A dollar for one ticket, five dollars for six tickets during lunches. And if you win, you get to be the principal of Lake Forest High School for a day. If selected, they can't have any referrals, and you have to dress for the role. And the student council will have a blood drive held on Tuesday, February seventh, from eight AM to two PM. There will be a drawing for the gift card to Chick-fil-A and Chipotle. And there is a pending and pending participation for our council, where we host some of the first annual Lake Forest Irresistible Pageant. Students will compete for scholarship money. Three categories. They will be judge art, evening wear, and a Q and A with lip sync and talent. And this was February first, second, and third, where they could only sign up those eight. Only the first and second, third base will be able to get the scholarship money. And there will also be a charity champion, and they will win the scholarship money as well. The charity champion is the student who collects the most money for the Ronald McDonald House Baltimore. The show is seven PM on Friday. February tenth, admission is five dollars per person, and there will be concessions available. And that'll be it. Thank you. And that'll be it, thank you.
Thank you, any questions for Ms. Ruiz? Claire, what year are you in school? You're senior, okay, what's your position?
Rep at large.
Okay, great, well, good job tonight, we'll see you again before you leave at the end of the year.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, three point two financial report, Mr. Kurt Kellman, welcome Mr. Kellman.
Good evening. The first of three items on the docket tonight for finance is the monthly tenant award report for the end of December, December thirty first. We're at the fiscal year halfway point. So most of the revenues for the year are in. And we've already tabulated everything for unit count and the state has made a lot of their transfers to reflect the amounts for unit count. So really the big change for revenue side, you can see in the division to all their costs or AOC line in the anticipated receipts, it says six hundred and seventeen thousand. That is the, we're basically recovering the entire amount of our fiscal year twenty eighteen. Reduction amount by cashing in our vacant units, so. These are units that we have not been able to fill, but we did earn. And so rather than. Continue to go throughout the year with them unfilled, we take the opportunity to cash those in now and then. Later in the year, if we do end up, we keep those positions posted, but if we do end up filling those, we can still pay for them with that six hundred and seventeen thousand dollars there, so. A big, big improvement there. And really, that's the big, the big change, the big wild card that we wait on. From the preliminary budget to the final budget, that's the big wild card, the division to all their costs, you know, and whether or not, you know, how much of that? That reduction, we will try to recover in terms of our revenues. As far as the rest of the, the revenue report, I mean, you'll see up there that we've got the final amount for the division three equalization, the five point eight million dollars. And everything else is pretty much not significant changes from the previous month. So and nothing really significant to report for the local funds or the federal funds. So ninety percent of all, ninety two percent of all budgeted revenues have been collected compared to ninety percent last year. At this time, any questions on the revenue portion of the report?
Questions for Mr. Kellman on revenue?
Okay, moving on to the expense. Same thing, everything's trending as we would expect. Towards the bottom of this first page. Under charter choice enrollment, that does reflect our final payment for the year. So. We do have an additional amount that we pay from tuition funds, that's not reflected on here, since this is just the discretionary budget. But that is a little bit less than we expected because we did fare a little bit better for student choice than we did last year, so we had more kids chasing into the district than we had choosing out. But our charter enrollment was up a little bit compared to last year. Moving on to page two, same thing trending as expected. Nothing really significant to report on the expense side for page two. We have forty eight percent of the discretionary budget remaining compared to forty seven percent last year and fifty five percent of all funds remaining. Which matches where we were at the same time last year. So any questions on the expense side?
Any questions for Mr. Kellman on expenses or the monthly report?
So we'll move on to the, the financial position report. This is the second item on the agenda for the finance side, and again, this is the second report of the year. It's reported three times and the next time it will be as of March thirty first is the next time we'll report this. So first off, the, in the upper right hand corner is what I traditionally direct you to, the projected balance on six thirty at the end of the fiscal year. That shows three point nine nine million, that's an increase from where we finished this past year. And so as we look back. To the upper left hand side, the actual unencumbered local expenses, eight point one million. That's about a little over three hundred thousand dollars compared to where we were at this time last year. So that's basically the cash we have on hand from, from the local fund perspective. And so as we go out and we go out to the projected available balance on three thirty one, which is more in the center of the chart at the top there for local funds, six point five million. Again, that's about. Three hundred and seventy thousand higher than where we, we were at the three thirty one point last year. So again, we're much higher than what we were at this time last year. But as you recall from several months ago, we do still have that twenty seventh local pay that's coming up that we estimated to be about three hundred and fifty, three hundred and sixteen thousand. So it's pretty much going to be a wash, otherwise that would have been added to the projected balance for June thirtieth. But with that, it's kind of a wash, so you would expect us to kind of stay even at three point eight million. But we are at a much better position right now in our division three state funds, the equalization funds were a couple hundred thousand dollars higher than where we were at this time last year. And those are funds that we use first to pay off our local salaries, because they're exhausted, and then we start dipping into our local salaries. So with that, that means that we're gonna, I'm projecting that we're gonna finish. Almost a couple hundred thousand dollars, you know, from three point eight one up to about three point nine nine in terms of our, where we'll close out the end of the fiscal year. For a district reserve. So any questions on the financial position report?
Questions on this report for Mr. Kellman, so I did just the twenty seventh pay, so where exactly does that, you know, so we should have. What thirteen pays per six months, right, where, where is it fall that we have fourteen?
Fourteen actually already happened in the first part of the year.
It did.
So July was a three pay month and December was a three pay month.
Okay.
And then we have this June is the final three pay month. The last item I have on the agenda is the final adjusted budget. So we present the final adjusted budget in Jan- January only because there's a significant amount of uncertainty. With the unit count and staffing, and by January, we have a much better picture of what's going on. And so, and really a much better picture from the revenue side, because to a lesser degree that the expenses really don't change that much. So I'll primarily focus on the discretionary revenues in blue. So you can see there. The division to all of their costs that reflects that unit cash in. So a big increase there over what we had reported in the preliminary budget. The equalization was also up a little bit due to the higher unit count that we had this year. And then I did adjust the formula salaries up slightly. Due to the higher unit count as well, so that's a little bit larger than what we saw in the monthly budget reports. One, a couple other changes structurally that I made here. You'll see down on the left hand side for the state funds. I broke out the minor capital improvements, I now show two different lines, one for minor capital improvements, which is the main state line. And then this year we received that additional enhanced minor capital improvements. And so the reason I broke those out is because. We could potentially go through the entire year without us showing those collected. Because the state will not send those to us, transfer those funds to us until we spend all of the original minor capital improvement money. So assuming because these are three year funds, there's a good chance we're gonna go over the fiscal year. Without having spent all of our minor capital improvement funds and hence not receiving those enhanced funds. So more than likely, we'll probably receive those next fiscal year unless for some reason we really blitz through our, our minor capital improvement money. The other structural change I made was, if you recall on previous budgets. I had other state revenue at the bottom of the state side there, and that was that senior property tax credit. And so I basically moved that over to the current expense tax receipts. So whereas the, for the current expense tax receipts used to be roughly five point one million. And now it reflects five point four million. The senior property tax credit is really just the state reimbursing us for what we should have collected in current expense taxes. So. Really, if you were to take the assessments across the district times our current expense tax rate, it would be roughly about that five point four million. So this is a way to put it all in the same location, even though that last amount comes from the state, it's really to reflect what we should be collecting is current expense tax receipts. And so what's in its place down there is that child safety, we're in CPR, that's just some miscellaneous state funds that we receive. They have very specific purposes in mind and we can only use them on those particular items. But overall, our discretionary funds, you can see in the bottom right, we're, you know, projecting that it's gonna be six hundred and eleven over what we projected in the preliminary budget. Any questions on the revenue side?
Questions when this revenue or the presentation?
And then moving on to the expenditure side. As I've done in the past, I've kind of shown the areas in red that I've adjusted with a revision increase, so the budget has gone up. And then the areas that are in light green, there are revision decreases, meaning. Or just the opposite, revision decrease is the, yeah, the budget has gone down. So on the, the school side there, all those increases in the budget are just because the actual enrollment counts went up. The only outlier there is the high school and really it only went down eight students, so it was, I think at the preliminary budget, I think it was eight seventy eight and it went down to eight seventy. So that's the only reason it's a revision decrease. The high school, you see a little bit of a revision increase to the budget, not much. But we have experienced increased costs for officiating and also for security. The football game and the basketball game security, we've had to add security for those events this year, and that's been driving up our costs there. On the school resource officer constable side, I've just added about ten thousand there to that budget for guard up costs for our two constables. So to get them outfitted and set up for the first year. And then on the curriculum side there, you'll see a new line item there called specialized education agreement, and so this is a new initiative. This year that we, we. Undertook with High Roads, which is down the street here in Felton, and so what they've done is, is they've set up a, a K to five classroom here in North Elementary. And it's to keep our kids in district so that we don't have to send them out. For those, those special placements, those complex placements to other districts or to High Roads itself. And so what happens is, is by keeping those kids in district, we are in those units on there, on those, those kids. And so they've got a classroom set up there at North Elementary where they can take up to nine students. That's the max that there are a lot that they agreed to take, but it's their teachers, it's their pair of professionals that are teaching the class with their specialized. Education and training to address those, those needs of those children. And so. What you see there, that, that number one hundred and fifty six thousand reflects the amount that we cashed in. So we cashed in one and a half units because we earned an additional one and a half units because we were able to keep those students in district. And then, so the part, a portion of those is the unit cash in, the other portion is we earned division two and division three. Funds as a result of those additional units too, so that's what one and a half units basically equates to. An additional state funds that we received. Now, the total cost of the agreement that we have with them is more than that, but the remaining amount of about a hundred thousand more will come from our tuition funds. So, but we feel this is very valuable for our own kids to keep them in the district. And, and so that we can. It's that much closer to bringing them inclusion to, you know, the existing classrooms that we have in our schools. And then as we move over to the right side for the, the finance side, the local salaries OECs, that was a little bit of a revision downward. The Kelly substitutes, we haven't had the quantity of subs that we, we were anticipating. But I fully expect, we've already seen an uptick in, in January, and I fully expect by the time the spring rolls around, we're gonna see a lot of those Kelly subs, you know, materialize. At least the requests materialize as well. And then the administrative services, I had to increase that budget, we've got our local audit costs that we have to account for now. That we, we did not previously have there. Our liability insurance went up thirteen percent this year. And then the other area is trash collection, which is another increased cost there for the administrative services. That charter choice enrollment reflects the, I think I had a hundred and fifteen thousand in there in the preliminary budget, so. That's the actual cost that we see that's coming out of the discretionary budget, a hundred and one thousand. And then down on the use of facilities, just a minor revision upwards of a few thousand dollars. Because it did seem like we were starting to see a little bit more use of our own facilities. And that's the, you know, the additional custodial overtime and so forth that we have to, to spend when. We basically loan out our facilities here. So overall, the total expenditure revision was only down by about thirty three thousand compared to the, the preliminary budget. But it does reflect a, maybe additional revenues, it still reflects a deficit, it's a hundred and nineteen thousand. But if you go to the next slide. You can see a hundred and nineteen thousand dollar deficit would get funded through the district reserve. And this is assuming that everything will get spent out as it's presented in that budget. And of course, we know that a lot of times we don't spend out those, those full budgets on all those categories. So if everything were to get spent out as presented, we would have a district reserve of about three point seven million. Any questions with the final adjusted budget?
Mr. Rouse just pointed out, there's just a very small discrepancy that for three, three fifty, four hundred dollars between. The total discretionary funds on slide two.
And I just noticed that, my question was, I should match track in the, I believe, slide three, yeah, anticipated and the total discretionary off slightly.
Three seventy nine versus seven six.
Oh, off of the, the overview slide on the third one? Yeah, so that means probably the overview slide was not updated when the, the previous one, so. Those, those first two slides, the second and third slide are the actual numbers and probably the third slide did not get updated. So probably at some point, there was a small revision to one of the other ones. That didn't get reflected on that third slide.
So since we're going to be approving it tonight, could you just? We'll, we'll prove it as is, you're saying that the, the second slide at three seventy nine is probably correct, so. Revise that, resend it out to us so we have it.
Sure, I can revise it during the meeting here and just.
And then I, so I wanted to understand the High Roads thing a little bit, so. Keeping the students in our district, it's costing us a hundred and fifty six thousand. Out of local funds, our, our local discretionary funds.
Correct.
If those, and, and then plus about a hundred thousand, it's coming from tuition. If these students were going out of district, would that all come out of tuition?
Yeah, yes.
So why doesn't, why can't it all come out of tuition if it's staying in-house?
Well, one of the, one of the ways that we attacked this issue. Is we believed that we could pay for the initiative. Or at least come close to paying for the initiative by earning those additional units in addition to. The savings of not having those students go out to other districts. So depending on, you know, what district they went to and what program they were with, there's a cost involved with that, that's purely tuition. And that alone is not enough to pay for this initiative. So in order to justify having them come in and, and, and teach and use their teachers and teach our kids. We had to use those units that we also earned as a result of having those kids in our district. So.
And this is the local expense for those units? Is that what that is or no, that should be in payroll, right?
No, it's a contract.
It's, it's a contract.
Yeah.
So are we also using units?
No, because.
No.
We, we went in with this with the knowledge that we knew we were gonna cash in whatever units those earned to help pay for this program.
Do you mind if I? The, do you mind if I jump in? The, the contract includes a teacher, two teaching aides assistants and an administrator that come with the program. So all of that money encompasses their own employees to. Work in that classroom. So that's why we can ask units to pay.
I, I would just be curious to know overall, though, how many students are we talking about? Well, it's in your relation.
Up to nine, currently we have five in our program.
So I'd just be curious to know overall, if the students were going outside of the district. What would that total cost be between what is funded by tuition tax? As well as I assume transportation we have to pay for.
Correct.
So I, I would be curious to know what that total cost would be compared to what the total cost is for us to house this. In district from all funding sources, tuition plus this and everything else.
Yeah, and so before we started this, we kind of ran those numbers to see what the break even point would be on those students, and it was right around five students.
Okay, so. So for those five students, we'd be paying that, we. So for those five students, we'd be paying that, we'd be paying two hundred and fifty-six thousand approximately to send them out.
Correct.
Okay. I might have a question on that later. Uh, anybody have questions? Yes, Mr. McCloskey.
Um, so High Roads, what is it considered? Is it a considered, does it run on a card, is it a card or four? What is it considered?
Um, I'm actually gonna have that in as part of my presentation.
That's fine. I, I guess my question was, what, I was wondering what their benefit was. Like, why would they?
That's a good question.
If they, we gain by keeping them and. You could, I mean, obviously when you don't wanna have more kids going out of your district, what does High Roads gain by providing this service? Because you would think that. Uh, unless it just has to be a monetary gain, you would think that they would lose from not having that. But I just wondered what their benefit was from that.
Well, I mean, from my perspective, I think. They wouldn't have all those kids, cause some of those kids might be a capital or C R and some of their I L Cs. Uh, all those kids wouldn't be, but maybe one of them might be or, or something like that. So. Um, that might be the perspective that they're looking at it. Um, the other thing is, is, you know, we've looked at this, you know, long term too, you know. There's, there's the possible, there's other possibilities out there. Where, um, we could potentially, you know, partner with another school district to fill those seats and maybe they pay us for those as well. So. Um, you know, we haven't got that far yet, but you know, we've looked at other possibilities as well.
High Roads is a highly structured, um. Uh, focus on behavioral, um, interventions along with academics. And so they spend a lot of time of their curriculum with. Um, self-regulation skills, um. And they don't have, um, a big program in their buildings. And so to reach more students, they work with. Districts, they partner with districts to have a classroom. So multiple districts in the state. Um, will house them in their, their program.
So they don't gain funds, what, but they still have to gain funds.
They do, yeah.
So they're, so somehow they're getting, besides just providing it, there has to be a payoff for them. As well. That's what I was just wondering, cause like we're gaining our, keeping our unit. But I just wondered what their trade-off was.
Yeah, I'm not sure, but I do know they hire, they vet, hire, interview, train all of their own staff. They bring the cur- the curriculum, they bring the, um, all the materials for that classroom. We just. Give them an empty room and they furnish it and staff it, um. With the curriculum and everything. So a lot of the money we pay them goes right back into the students, um.
So we are lucky enough to happen to have Ms. Allmans with annual report this same evening. So I'm sure you're a lot more than, um, sure. And we do still have children, uh, students at High Roads right now. So this is, again, this is just K to five. So.
And. That's another big benefit of having them here because the High Roads program only serves five to twelve. Out, if we send them out, we didn't really have the option of sending them out previous to five. So we kind of are billing it within our own.
Five to twelve, you're speaking of grades?
Grades five to twelve, yes.
Okay. Um, any other questions for Mr. Kellman? Were you done with your slide presentation? Any other questions for Mr. Kellman or discussion on the, uh, final budget? Uh, they're saying it's going to come up for a vote later as well as the other reports later in the meetings. All right, seeing none. Thank you, Mr. Kellman. All right, we're on to three point three superintendent report, Dr. Lucas.
Thank you, sir. Good evening, everybody. I'll try to be brief because we have a lot of reports tonight, but I'd like to start by officially welcoming everybody to the second half of the school year. I'm on the agenda, uh, again, uh, so I will keep it short. Uh, congratulations to all of our recenies that were here earlier. Um, we have a lot of great things going on in the district and it's always, um. Uh, wonderful to recognize the students and staff doing the great things here in Lake Forest. Um, especially wanted to thank, uh, Ms. Volshol and her team, Lake Forest Community Education Foundation. They're not only some of the hardest working people, they're some of the kindest, uh, people to work with in the district. So thanks to them very much. Please remember to nominate, please remember to nominate one of our fine teachers, the teachers of the year. The link to the nomination form can be found on the main page of our website. And, um, all of our teachers get to see those nominations. So it is pretty exciting for them, uh, when they get recognized in that way. The nomination period remains open until February seventeenth. Always like to give a few calendar reminders. There is no, no school, uh, for students. This is a bit down the road. Um, February thirteenth for parent teacher conferences, um. Should be able to find your child's report card on the home access center, uh, as of today. Uh, February is also Black History Month. We'll be holding a lot of events to commemorate Black History, including our district provide celebration. Friday evening, February twenty-fourth at Lake Forest High School. I encourage you to keep your eye on the district calendar, stay up on all activities and events. Since the constables were mentioned, I did wanna give an update on that, that we do have some qualified candidates in the queue. And we will be interviewing for those positions very soon. So hopefully we'll see those castles on the job before long. And, uh, that is it. I thank you and I give the floor back to the board for any questions or discussion.
Dr. Lucas, any questions or discussion, uh, for superintendent, superintendent report? All right, thank you. Good sir, we are on to three point four special programs. Ms. Michelle, all new welcome.
Thank you. Good evening. So I'm gonna give a brief overview of the special services department. I'm starting with our overview of our school staffing structure. So currently we have the total number of students with I E Ps at six hundred and eighty-six. Which is about nineteen percent of overall students, um, district wide in Lake Forest. Um, we have a special education instructional curriculum assessment and instructional coach, CIA. Um, person who, um, floats around between all the buildings to help all special ed teachers in all capacities. Um, and oversees our professional development program as well. We have seven special education coordinators, one at each building. They oversee the building special education program. They each have one clerk who schedules meetings, sends home paperwork. Um, and maintains both electronic and hard files. We have sixteen related service team members. This year we have only three school sites, um, psychologists. They all are taking on multiple schools, um, this year. So between the three of them with the six hundred and eighty-six, um, they have large case loads. Um, but they are amazing and they're getting it all done. We have four speech language therapists. Um, we have a total of two hundred and ninety-one students in the district who receive speech therapy. So there's an average of about seventy-two students per speech therapist in our district. We have one occupational therapist. Only the occupational therapist can do the evaluation. We have a hundred and sixteen students who receive occupational therapy. Um, but we also have two certified occupational therapy assistants, um, our CODAs. Um, who share the, um, therapy case load. So they share around forty students, um, for their treatments. We have two contracted physical therapists through Jungle Gems. Um, we have a total of forty students in the district to receive physical therapy. And then two behavioral health therapists for the district. Right now it's structured, so one conducts. Functional behavior assessments and be- behavior intervention plans, and then one trains and implements them in the classroom. We just. Um, had interviews and are hiring two additional ones. So we're excited to expand, um. Our work with, um, behavioral interventions, including, um, uh, B C B A. Um, this is an overview of our, uh, state and federal reporting and audits. Um, I'm not gonna go through them, but I just wanted you to see, we have around thirteen plus, um, indicators. Um, that we report on every single year. So, um, one to two a month that we are doing constant internal audit. Um, some are self-reporting, some D O E, um, allows us to self-report first and then they go into the database. Um, and do an external audit. Um, we are doing very well in our audit area. Um, except for the ones that we struggle the most with, um, would be our, um. Reading our, um, state assessment goals, um, for students with special ed. Um, uh, this year, um, I've been able to really separate the five oh four process from the, um. I E P process. So it's very important to understand those are two very different, um, umbrellas. So the A D A, the Americans with Disabilities Act oversees five oh fours. And that just really focuses on making sure that schools don't discriminate against anyone due to any type of disability, whether it's medical, physical or mental. Um, this year our school counselors are taking on the five oh fours, um, in order to really create, um, a separate. Um, entity for five oh fours. And then I E Ps, um, are under the special education coordinators and every single building. That falls under the Individuals Disabilities Educational Act. Um, this graphic is just a little, um, quick representation of the process. Starts with the referral. Equals the evaluation. Once the team determines that the student is eligible, then they develop the I E P, determine the appropriate placement for the student. Um, and the service delivery. And then every three years, there's a reevaluation process. So after the reevaluation, they would then meet again to determine. Um, for ongoing services and/or if those services need to change based on the students, if the students' needs are changing.
Yes, just some clarifying questions. I really tried to understand this, um, and I continually get confused.
It's super brief. There's so much.
No, no, that's fine. So in, in my, my mind, I understand, I just you brought terms like one is more. Um, let's call it medical related. One is more educational related. Is the five oh four the, the medical and the I E P is the education?
The bit, yes, yes. The biggest caveat for an I E P is that whatever the disability is, it must show an adverse educational or academic impact. And if it's not an adverse academic impact, then it would, it may be better suited for a five oh four. So there are things that we can do to our buildings to help accommodate students who may need wheelchairs or walkers or, you know. Braille or any type of those things that may not have an adverse educational or academic impact. Um, and then we would look at a five oh four accommodating them. But if we are seeing a large need academically. Then we have to write an academic program and that's where the I E P.
So, and, and so an individual student could have a five oh four or they could have, in in- independently, they could have an I E P independently. Or they could have both.
Yeah, I don't think that many students cross over both because if the five oh four, if a student has a five oh four. Um, but we're starting to see an academic impact, then we would definitely move them all the way over onto the I E P. Um, the five oh four follows the student all the way through life. Um, it could follow them outside of school in their job. Um, adults can have five oh four, um, accommodations for their needs. Um, especially if you wanna accommodate student, um, uh, adults who may need an interpreter or those type of things. Um, whereas an I E P is just about their educational career, so it ends at graduation.
So for me, if I think of, uh, the five oh four as being what employers, uh, work through with the A D A and, and reasonable accommodations. That would be similar to a five oh four.
Absolutely.
And the I E P is specific to.
Just their education, yeah. It's more of like how teachers teach.
That helps. Thank you.
Yep. So this, um, shows our external and alternative placements. Um, Kent County, we are really fortunate to have. Um, quite a lot of, um, specialized schools in our area. So all of these schools listed here, um, you'll see some are in Capital, some are in Susan Rodney, some are in Christina. Um, they're kind of spread all over, but they all specialize in a different area. So, um, our I L C, for example. Um, specializes more in behavioral, um, interventions, um, and whereas like Charlton. Um, would specialize more in with students with autism or other advanced medical needs. Um, we also do have some students who go to, um, school for the deaf up in Christina. Um, and then you do see there's two High Roads in there. So there's, um, the Specialized Ed of Delaware, which is the High Roads Felton. Um, so that serves our, um, grades five through twenty, ages twenty-two. And we have three students who attend in the Felton program, um, off campus. And then we have our. Um, that says, our High Roads in District North, it says four to twelve, but I, I apologize, I put that in there wrong. It's actually K to five. Um, our in district program just serves K to five. Um. So we don't, we don't take those decisions lightly. We go through a very lengthy process. With multiple interventions to make sure that we can meet the students' needs as best as possible. And if we find an area where. Or we get to a point where we're not able to meet the students' needs as much as, um, they need or to the extent of a specialized school. Then we go through the referral process, um, where we transfer them into those schools so they can perceive more specialized. Um, interventions and supports. So currently we have a hundred and thirty-five students, um, in alternative placements. Um, are outside schools. And that's the total tuition we paid for those placements. And the, that twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three costs down there is really just kind of a, um. Um, pre- prediction.
Projection.
Projection, okay, yeah. Because, um, we get the bill at the end of the academic year. And the prices do kind of change, um, and fluctuate a little bit with the needs. Um, if students need a one-on-one pair or those kind of things or transportation or related services, that bill will, will change. Any questions on that before I advance to the next slide? There are a lot up there.
I think we'll, I've got some, but I think we'll come back.
Okay. Um, this is a lot and I'm, and I, I'm not putting it up there for you to, you know, dig into every single thing. I just wanna show you. All the professional element. I'm really proud of, um, Ashley Crawford, our CIA, um, instructional coach. Um, and I have really tried to focus on professional development and training to make sure that. Um, everything is consistent across the district and across schools and that we're really working with fidelity to I D A program. So this is just from the summer until today, which actually we had another, um, P D opportunity today. That twenty people attended after school. Um, it's just been, it's been met with, um. People have been really great about receiving the professional development. So I just wanted to throw that in there to show that we've been working hard on that. And, um, uh, this is just to show, I'm, I'm holding bi-weekly, um, meetings with our coordinators. And then once a month meetings with a related service team, just again to be consistent across the district, consistent messaging, um, expectations. Making sure that, um, we are working from the top down. I'm going to the next slide. Um, and then I, I can't, um, forget that we also oversee our multilingual learner program. We have a hundred and fourteen multilingual active students in our program, which is about three point two percent. Uh, um, of the district. Um, we are the second smallest in the state. Um, but it is growing. You can see, um, all the different countries that our students come from and all the different languages that our students who are in our district speak. Um, a lot of times people think right away that multilingual means that, uh, they have to speak Spanish. But, um, there's a lot of different languages. So, um, we're proud that we're implementing, um, our multilingual learner program. We have right now two teachers across the district and two pairs that are working in that area. Um, and I think that that is all.
Great, thank you. Um, open up to the board for discussion or questions for Ms. Allman. Dr. Y.
Um, I saw where the, um, school counselors were taking on the responsibility of. Um, implementing the Bible for and overseeing them. Uh, my question is, what kind of training have they had in that respect? Cause I didn't see anything with professional development listed for them. Um, and I'm not sure that they have. Enough, uh, from their education to be able to handle that responsibility. And then, once they have created, what is the process? To let the staff that's working with that particular student know what has been developed?
Yeah, great questions. Um, so I have done the training myself. Um, I had a group training and then. Um, went to individual schools, um, to work with individual, um, guidance counselors. Um, previously to this year, some schools guidance counselor, I'm sorry, school counselors were already doing five oh fours. And some schools in the district, the special ed coordinators were. So I really just wanted to make sure that it was consistent across the district. Um, so some school counselors had a lot more experience than others. So, um, I have done individual, um, training as well. Um, and I am always available and, um, ready and willing to attend all five oh four meetings. As necessary to help them through that process. We also have, um, principals in the district who have been kind of sitting in. We also have um principals in the district who have been kinda sitting in on that process as well with their knowledge. Um, oh, I've created a Google database where all the folders are housed by grade level. So the guidance counselor could um just look at the student's schedule. Um, email link to all their teachers so they can go on the Google Drive. And any changes um as it goes are implemented in real time and the teachers can see it in real time because it's all housed on that platform. And there's also a notification on e-schools for every single student. When you look at their page, there'll be a little notification there. That says that they have a five oh four and they can click on that to to view that.
Um, when they overview this, the second page there. So we said, uh, seven spec ed coordinators, one in each building.
Yes.
Those are all full-time positions, meaning they're not E P ers, they're not shared. That's their sole duty, each of the seven.
Yes, and um I think we use um I D A funds to pay for some of those positions. I don't. But yes, one hundred percent um full-time. They schedule all the meetings, run all the meetings. Um, manage all the programs, make sure students are getting their accommodations and needs and. Con- contact their parents.
So I'm I'm curious to know a little more about that that workload. So um, you you know, down below. Couple of them you gave like average caseload, right? So I I you you went off, talked about it tonight, something if you could send the board interested to know, break down six hundred eighty-six I E Ps. What is that per school? So we kinda see we've got one in each school. What's the workload between them? Um, and then, you know, the other thing I I I noticed, so about about how many educational staff, how many teachers in the district?
We're probably just shy of three hundred.
So, I mean, so nineteen percent of. Our students have an I E P. And. You know, two point three percent of our staff. O- only two per three percent of our staff are devoted to managing the process. I know they're not actually teaching them. So I don't know. You know, maybe that's the right number, maybe it's not, but I was uh. Very intrigued to see that nearly twenty percent of our students have one and we've got seven folks that are coordinating all of these. Uh, events that that go on with. So I I'd be curious to see the workload by school.
Yeah, definitely.
Um, and then. So the page with all the external alternate.
Yes.
Placements. Um, so again, not to belabor tonight, but one thing. I'd be interested, each of the programs that are listed. Maybe just a very brief, one sentence summary of what each of those is.
Sure.
Um, you know, so I know what the difference is, for example, between the K C C E C S, Ken I L C and that that type of thing. Um, but the only one I can reason is the Delaware School for the Deaf. I kind of, the answer's in the name there. I get it. Um, still, I come back to this in in district high roads a little bit though. So, you know, the cost we have there listed is a hundred and seven thousand. So what does that entail? Because, so, cause over here in the budget, I know it's a budgetary number, I'm not sure what this number is, but over here we talked about budgeting. A hundred and fifty-six thousand. Plus, what we were saying was about a hundred thousand coming from tuition, so.
It's a hundred and seven. So the total contract, I think, is about two hundred and sixty-three thousand. So that's how we pay for the con- or that's how we're proposing to pay for the contract is. A hundred and fifty thousand from the units that we earn from these five students. And then the other amount comes from the tuition that hopefully we've avoided by sending them outside the district.
And some of these placements, um. We can go through I C T and ask the state for seventy percent of that funding. In certain situations. So we have taken advantage of that and we do have. I think five students who um were being funded through the I C T process. Um, as well. So we have to present our whole case and then they review it and decide if they're gonna pick up part of our bill.
Um, and then two more things with this. So out of this hundred and thirty-five this year, do we know? Are are any of them school choice students? Could we?
No, that doesn't account for anybody that's school choice. I mean, cause. School choice, they they're now in another district. Oh, you mean choice in, choice in. Um. That, I don't know. We do a little research on that.
There have been instances of students who, for example, attended Milford and they were placed. At one of these outside schools and their family moved into our L E A. And we've had to make the decision to either keep them there or pull them back. And I think so far in a hundred percent of those cases, so I I I guess I can't say a hundred percent, but. In my experience here in the district, we've kept them in those outside placements. So that just means that the bill gets transferred to us.
Okay.
But we don't tend to, I I don't. I don't, I don't want.
I wouldn't speak to that. I wouldn't think if you choice in. That you would then, you, I would think that your home district would have to pay that or you couldn't choice here.
If we accept them as a student. And then we decide that that student needs to go to outside placement, we do make that bill.
So that would, that's what I would be curious to to get an understanding of. And the last thing. So the cost here. Um, the total cost and the cost by student. Um. This is total cost that the district pays, right? This is not.
Yeah.
This is not just local funds, is that correct?
This is just local funds.
This is local tuition funds.
Local tuition funds.
But it's not per student.
So it doesn't account for state funds also. For instance, that one down on Shore Haven. That's an I C T placement and that's just the thirty percent that we pay.
Yeah.
That's how expensive that placement is.
Because it's a residential.
Yeah, I mean, it's one four seven residential, so it's. The state picks up. Two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars.
State picks up that other funding for those through our unit count and what we get for that unit count?
No.
That's there, we go through the I C T, the inter collaborative team process at D O E where I present. Um, a big file of everything that we've done and why we feel that the student needs to go there and then we take it to the board there. And present our case and they either accept and say we've done it in good cause or deny. Um. And we have in the past been denied in I C T and then taken on a hundred percent of that. But this year, all of our students, um, we've, that we've taken, we've accepted.
So I know when we did the unit count, we have some that come out as, uh, what is it Travis? Highly intensive, what's that?
Intense, complex and basic are the three categories.
Right. So do these students count into our unit count or they, no, they do not.
That's why the high road students, keeping them here, we get the unit. We don't get the unit for any of these, but we also have to pay.
And then are there transportation costs on top of that?
Yeah, so.
For the I C T placements, the transportation costs are included in that. So that hundred and twenty-five thousand you see for us. Or the specialized education high roads for Felton, the uh three students at eighty-nine thousand. That includes the transportation cost in there, yeah.
The only other high roads um for the younger students is in Wilmington. So there was an instance like last year where we were paying um transportation up there. Um, and but now that we have it in the district, we don't pay that cost.
Which probably saves with gas and all of that too.
It was almost more than the school.
Miss McCloskey.
Um, is some of this. Do parents have a say in some of these as well though? Like, or if you, if you're talking least effective environment, sometimes like when you have the school for the deaf. Some, or could some of those students be served here with an interpreter, but they, the parents choose to send them to school?
Yeah, and this does kinda go down a a a bigger um issue, but the um. School, the deaf, there is a deaf bill of rights. So the, what the parent wants overrides.
Override, okay.
Only in that instance.
Okay.
All the other ones, we don't try to collaborate with the parents. At the end, they can say, no, I wanna keep them in Lake and we can't force that. But um we we take the parents, we give them a cool tour, we explain why and the process. They're with us. All the steps of the way. Um, so yes, they have to agree to all of this, but we don't usually initiate. Well, some conversations have been initiated by parents and. Um. We will look at the data and decide if that's a good placement.
And and none of these are.
Oh.
Uh, behaviorally.
Yes. Um, some are Shore Haven.
If I L C.
Okay, alright, so.
The Kent I L C, the C R I L C, yes, the high roads.
So yeah, just maybe that brief overview or explanation of.
Yeah.
And I, to go off of what, um. Earlier about um seeing the breakdown, I'm I'm really interested in seeing that along with. Um, I know that the past few years have been, you know, obviously we've had a change, but. With our special education rate being at almost twenty percent, just how that compares previously and like. With this caseload number, it's really concerning to me of how much we're putting on um some of our stuff and I know that. We're we're short-staffed to begin with, looking at school psychologists having three, like, I mean, that. And I know we can get more, but they're not there to get, I get that, but um. I would definitely like to see a breakdown and especially like. Maybe even just a comparison of just a few years before COVID, just to kinda see where we stand. Um, what can be attributed to. So if we could get like a just a couple of years back. Um, I think that'd be really helpful.
So you wanna see a breakdown of the percentages?
And just like what that caseloads of students per school, like if we were, you know, um, where we're having to dish off the five. And I like to see the five oh fours and the I E Ps. Um, but just, just, I like how you kinda broke it down in that second slide where. How many psychologists we had serving this many just by school and then just like in the past few years, just because I'm curious as to how. Much, maybe these COVID years have affected, um, but then what we're expecting. From the caseloads now versus what they may have been before and if that's feasible.
Yeah, so like, for example, at our deck program for our three and four-year-olds, um, we have seventy-seven students within. Just in preschool, so that does kinda give us an idea. Those students coming in. Um, would you like to see it broken down by disability?
No, I I'm I just, I'm more concerned for this case, caseload of staff. Like, I'm just wanting to see. What the traditional numbers were for our district before we went into this kind of COVID. Life and where we are now on the other side of it and what that discrepancy is like. And maybe it's not as bad as you think, but. I'm kind of curious.
Yeah.
You start.
Um, I would be interested to, how does our um. Nineteen percent compared to the other districts around us?
It's high. I think on average, um. It runs about fifteen percent per district. Um. We've seen an influx of students moving into the district. Um, with I E Ps um already being identified. Um. I actually had a coordinator tell me the other day that a family told them, her, that they, their doctor recommended them to move from Pennsylvania. To Delaware because our specialized program is much better. Um, and making the Harrington. So we're seeing a lot of um. Students moving into the state to receive better educational um and specialized services.
Mr. Com.
And to answer a question you had previously about school choice, uh, I looked up a a list of our school choice students just from one of our districts. Uh, it does specify their the level. So for instance, we do have an intense student that choiced in. And so we do get more money for that that intense student that we do for a basic student. And again, that that charter choice process. Of of the funds that we get for that or pay for that is really to just account for the local tax portion. Because the unit count covers the state's funding portion. So we're just trying to. To cover the back half, which is the 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 property tax and the local tax portion.
Okay, thank you. Uh, anything further for Mrs. Almond's report? Well, great job. I know we threw a lot of follow-up at you.
Those are really great questions.
Really appreciate your time and putting all this together. We are on to three point five buildings and grounds report from Mr. Star. Welcome, Carl.
I know, alright. Good evening, um. As a couple, you probably remember back in two thousand nineteen, uh, the district hired a. An engineer coming to perform a district live roofing assessment. This was actually presented to the board in January twenty twenty. The report was approximately like thirty-four pages long. It described how to perform assessments such as uh thermographic infrared testing and uh. Core sampling. And our findings uh was also reported. And so this first slide here, the summary of our findings, um. In two thousand nineteen, approximately forty-seven percent of the district's roofs were in good, good condition. On the flip side, that forty-seven percent were also in poor position or condition. Four percent were on verge of failure and two percent were in fair condition. Since two thousand nineteen, we've been uh using approximately twenty-five to thirty percent of our Myer cap budget towards roofing. The majority of this fund were for repairs or to prolong the life cycle of the roofs. Uh, however, we were able to replace some of the smaller sections of roofs at Chipman North and High School. We did try. In two thousand twenty-two to pursue a C M with the state. It was declined and we were directed to use our extra money to fund the roof replacement. So we went full bore to that. And uh, here's where we are today on the next slide. So uh, North Elementary. At conclusion of this year. Will be one hundred percent new roofing. Uh, this is a combined roof we did last couple of years, um. As well, East Elementary will be all the roofing with the exception of the slate roof on the north side of the building, which is still in very good condition. W T Chipman, which you'll see come up to the board tonight for approval, will be one hundred percent new roofing, including with what we did last couple of years as well. And the high school uh is actually set to go out and bid in the summer of twenty twenty-three with the anticipation of getting the work done in the summer of twenty twenty-four. So. Um. So at the end of this year, on the next slide, Travis. At this year, we should be uh roughly seventy percent recent, it will be in good or new condition. Eighty percent will be in fair condition. And thirteen percent will be in poor condition. The. So comparison where we will be in this year compared to two thousand nineteen. Looking at this block that is in poor condition, which is roughly uh fourteen percent is actually the high school. And like I said, we'll be out to bid this summer. Uh, also, we moved central, which was actually in good condition, two thousand nineteen to fair. Cause it actually has about ten more years up in its life cycle, so now being in fair condition. And there was a couple of small sections, uh, one at South Elementary and one at Deck. That are in fair condition, but I'm expecting to have it take care of in twenty twenty-four as well. Go again, Travis. So coming up next, we have the Chipman uh and Deck H V A C. They're scheduled to go out and bid in late February. Uh, the anticipation was to uh. Have that done this summer, um, however, we did get an email last week. Saying that we were still having long delays and H V A C proposed due to supply shortages. Um, some of them we saw this in roughly sixty months. Uh, I'm anticipating or I'm hopeful. That this summer we probably still be able to get this done because this is a small scale of work compared to like, you know, complete schools and stuff like that. Uh, as I said, high, high school roofing will be out for a bid. In February, uh, with the anticipation of. Getting it done. I'm sorry, I got it forbidden summer with anticipation of summer twenty twenty-four. And uh, North H V A C and Chipman H V A C, I had on there to be determined, but it's looking like we're actually gonna get them out and be probably late summer of twenty-three. To get completed in the summer twenty twenty-four as well. And I'll be paying all the remaining funds we have left. But so far, we're trending a lot lower than we thought we would be with the new replacements, so it's looking pretty, pretty positive. And that's all I have. Any questions?
Both roof and H V A C trending lower or?
Uh, yes, yes, yes. So the hope could be, um. I'm not sure, we'd probably get like all of North H V A C done and. With our enhanced M C I funds and also with uh, yes, and she might like to get it done as well.
Uh, questions for Mr. Star, Miss McCloskey.
With the next thing coming up with Chipman, um, that is, that is just for the gym, the H V A C for that.
It's the gym and the uh Smallbrook building outside.
And then how are we like? Where does the rest of Chipman stand on H V A C? Are we still?
That's what's in the works to go out and bid this summer.
That's, okay, that's part of the bidding.
The the scariest part about that is, and the biggest thing we saw in the email that Sharon documented last week. Um, it has a chill or pretty air condition. The uh, the doctor is actually in the process of switching refrigerants. And they said seventy-five, was seventy-five weeks on that.
On the new refrigerant.
On on the chiller replacement of the new refrigerator, yeah. Yeah. So I'm gonna try to push that out a bit as soon as possible, so hopefully. Like the fall, it's just not looking real good.
What about heating system there?
That's all part of.
It's all part of it.
New borders, unit advancement classrooms, everything. Yeah.
Mr. R.
Uh, two questions. First question, I'll piggyback on the Chipman Gym H V A C.
What's that?
That will cool the gym as well.
Yes.
Yeah, that's.
Second question, how old is the slate? Is that original to the post fire? That's still in good shape.
Yeah, it has to get some minor repairs and certain places positive early eighties. What's that?
Early eighties.
The high school pool H V A C, where where did that stand?
So the the natural, the high school natural, the pool pack was done, which takes care of the actual pool water and the entire space. We're talking about just conditioning. Or including conditioning this space above the stands. We talked about that last week, we're actually going to look into that, the enhanced M C I. I have a partial issue with this because we've already got. This is just me, but your your condition is based to eighty two degrees. So you got the whole space is eighty two, and if you got the open stands and you're trying to build sixty degree air on air, we're just kind of, to me, it's just like funneling money out. So I want to look into possibly trying to close that in some kind of a way, so I gotta look into doing that as well, so.
And if we go back to the twenty twenty three projected roof conditions at one single pie chart. Maybe one more. That one, so. Hopefully then by we're saying by the summer of twenty twenty four, all of our core goes away. High school gets taken care of. What then is in that fair category?
Central elementary.
Central. And then the timeframe on that.
It's got about ten year life cycle on it and I'll sit and to. In the future with my cap funds, whatever, we take care of.
And so then that means the other ones not listed in here would be. South?
South, south has the metal roof, the only section in south that we're struggling with is there's one flat roof is is E P D M, which is where we've been having a couple of leaks. And I'm anticipating taking care of that as well in the next year.
Okay, and then Deck?
That has. Above the multi purpose room and the officer, we first walk in that section there is going to be replaced.
Okay, and then this building, C B O.
We got done last year.
So I had any other question, Mrs. McCloskey?
First question about. South with a metal roof, what is anticipation letting on that?
Oh, no roofing fifty years.
Fifty years.
Depending on the gauge, which it is a heavier gauge, so it's like.
So I I will, I will applaud Mr. Star, I will applaud the district for finding a way to get this done. When the state told us no and kind of left us to our own devices a little bit, so we have made tremendous progress. Just look at those two pie charts, this is portrayed a little bit differently than that report in two thousand nineteen, I think we had a, like it was red.
I'm glad they gave you that report from what's all about.
No, but I mean, yeah, I mean, there was, there was a lot of red everywhere and I never take red in any report is being. So so I just said, you know, great job to like forest and and your department as well, so thank you. Up to three point six L F A report, Mr. Ben Black, welcome Ben.
Oh, thank you, good evening, sorry. At the beginning of a new market period and a new semester, the staff has started work getting students acclimated. To their new schedules or they're continuing in program with their current students depending on who they're in. And I would also like to thank the administration for the creation of the future community and making sure that their staff included on it. L F A and the staff appreciate the ability to share our perspective. On the ground and always look forward to any opportunity, sorry, opportunity for the administration for the success of our current and future students.
Thanks, Black, any discussion and questions for Mr. Black? Well, thank you for being here, I will check as well, appreciate it and thanks for all that everyone is doing. We are on to discussion items, five point one, school finance update, Dr. Lucas.
Good evening, everybody. Thought I would bring the board up to date on the recently formed and having met school finance committee. Go ahead and click on to the next slide, purpose of this presentation is going to be to inform you about the work of this committee. And then review our next steps where the future for school finance is concerned. Just wanted to go over a couple of quick definitions, first off, referendum is a direct vote by the people in a specific community on a proposal law or political issue. I wanted to come up with the, I wanted to clearly make sure we defined our operating versus capital funding. Operating funds meaning essentially the funds that we need every day to conduct day to day business. Versus our capital funds which are used for capital projects such as buildings or major improvements. I also wanted to remind the the audience about the district reserve, which are those funds that we have, kind of like our savings account. Which we use to cover future obligations, emergency expenses and large swings in cash flow. I think Mr. Kellerman noted that at the end of this school year, we should be somewhere around the neighborhood of. Three point six or three point seven million dollars in our district reserve. And then budget deficit, of course, is if we spend more than we collect, but in in the most recent years, we've had a budget surplus. Meaning we've collected more than we've spent. So why did we put together a funding committee, a school funding committee? Well, our district has been functioning effectively on the same local operating revenue base for about the past few school years. Unfortunately, the cost of personnel and resources, as everybody knows, have escalated. And eventually we are going to need to raise our revenues to meet the escalation in those costs. So the school finance committee was formed essentially to determine a fiscal strategy. To support and maintain those increasing costs, specifically our big concerns are staff recruitment and retention. School safety and security, transportation and technology. So we invited a cross section of stakeholders from the community to participate, we invited staff, administrators, parents, community members, board members. Alumni, initially, we invited about a hundred and ten or a hundred and twenty people. We met twice, initially all in person on November thirtieth. And then again, we followed up with another meeting on January nineteenth, collectively, I think we had about fifty five. Individuals meet and then several more who responded to some of our online information requests. During our meetings, we provided information, we collected input, we had a lot of really strong discussion questions. About the future of the district where finance was concerned and based on the data, we crafted a recommendation that we will present to the board. So I wanted to review a little bit about our situation in terms of our finances and. Yeah, I'm sure the the board is familiar with these numbers, but just as a quick review. Our district reserve way back in two thousand eleven was at about five million dollars and again, the district reserves that. Kind of emergency savings account that we have. Increasing costs over the years eventually drove that reserve down to about one point seven three million. And I, of course, was not here at the time, but reports to me were that the district went through some real belt tightening at that time. Made some, made some savings and investments and were able to drive that. Reserve back up to about two and a half million around two thousand eighteen. Right around two thousand eighteen nineteen, we're able to maintain that level. And then, of course, we all know at the end of two thousand nineteen, students and staff were sent home in March. And because of a combination of savings that were incurred as a result of not having school every day. Along with an injection of some federal dollars, we were able to drive that district reserve up to where we are now, which is three point eight million. As the board knows, two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty one and two thousand twenty two. We projected budget deficits, but as a result of some really prudent fiscal. You know, use as well as. That that federal money that we were able to to. Utilize, we actually recognized surpluses in each of those three years. So I did want to give everybody a quick snapshot of the district tax rates in our surrounding districts, as you can see, lakes all the way there to the left. Significantly lower tax rate overall compared to our neighbors. And I think that's only a a small reflection of the of the overall tax rate, because on the next slide. What you can see is what that means for us is we actually collect about five point four million in local tax revenue. Even though. Our neighbor, our neighbors collect significantly more, our tax rate not only lower, we have less. Units from which we collect taxes, so as you can see, we're collecting significantly less. Tax revenue than than all of the other districts here in the county. And what that results in is a difficulty to really be calculating our local salaries. This chart here represents where we fall rank rank wise in terms of our our average salaries. So our entry level teachers are seventh out of seven, our masters are step ten masters are fourth out of seven. As you can see, our masters plus five to five, step fifteen are seven out of seven and our our most experienced and our most. Highly qualified teachers are six out of seven. Our new new teachers are about eight, paid about eight point three percent less than Milford, seven point six percent less than Smyrna. Makes it very difficult to recruit and bring in talent to the district when we're trying to compete with those other districts. We just stopped there real fast, that that slide there, because it came up during our committee meeting. And I've also heard it elsewhere in the community, there was a. Local newspaper that published salary scales and it showed a much different picture of Lake Forest there, but. My my understanding is that that was incorrect. And we did go back to the the publication and asked them to print a retraction, which was not done, right? So anyone who saw that that thinks we are in a better position than this, it was misleading. Yeah, could I get Mr. Kellerman to to kind of report on that as to why that happened? Kirk, could you comment on that?
Well, I was the one that kind of recognized that I knew that we were below the other districts in terms of first year salary, so I I looked up what we actually were. The the state news had basically published what we were this, our starting salary they published. Was actually a step three, so two years of experience, so it was like, you know, three steps down on the scale, so apparently. What it looks like happened was is when they opened up the file to see what our salary structure was. They looked at the very top row and they they pulled that number, assuming that was a first year salary, but they didn't scroll up to see that there was. You know, a couple more lines above that, and so that's what ended up getting published. I just thought it was important to note at this point because I have heard it. Committee to where, you know, that's that's not what was really included, so.
Thank you. So based on our November thirtieth meeting with the committee, we asked for some feedback from them and about seventy three percent, we had twenty six responses. Of about forty participants and about seven out of ten. Were convinced that we needed to run an operating referendum as soon as possible and about nineteen percent of those folks. Felt like they needed more information to make a decision on that. After our January nineteenth committee meeting, we surveyed the folks again, we got about nineteen responses in the face to face meeting. All nineteen felt like the the need for the referendum was pretty urgent. Eight out of ten that responded to an online questionnaire felt like we needed to go to referendum. With the online questionnaire, we included some rates, some some estimate rates, which. I I that's not for something that we need to discuss right away, just just suffice to say eight out of ten. Responded that they thought the referendum was where we needed to go, take the next step. So what if we don't seek a revenue increase? As we know, we can't continue to operate in deficit. And so what we would end up having to do is set eventual limits on things like staff compensation, safety and security. Technology and transportation, we simply just wouldn't be able to pay for some things and we'd have to. Reduce our services in some way. So just to summarize, the district has operated within its means without a tax increase for the past eight years. Increasing costs and personnel, transportation materials require us to match that revenue in order to keep our budget balanced. So we're going to follow up, follow, I'm going to follow this up with the presentation of the February ninth meeting. And recommend to the board that we vote to approve an operating referendum campaign with a vote in May of twenty twenty three. Take effect next school year. We'll ask for the board to vote on that, if the board votes to approve, we'll notify the election board. Will then specify through the board and approve the details of the new tax rates and begin a community campaign. So I open the floor for any questions or discussion in the work we've done to this point.
Any discussion questions from the board for the school finance update, Dr. Lucas?
So following that, when would our community expect to see that big effect with following all the rules, if everything went? Forward, when would those that money and that the taxing could just take effect, how long would that process?
That's a good question, Mr. Kellman, would that be twenty three, twenty four tax year?
If it was voted on in May and it passed, then we could implement that for the. Starting July first.
So that would mean the next time we set tax rates, which.
Correct, so really a month later, we set tax rates. For the following fiscal year.
So it would be pretty quickly.
Yes, ma'am. And with negotiations underway.
I would, so I I think it's important for the board prior to. Our next meeting in two weeks where this is going to be presented to us, I think it's important for the board to. Get ask any questions or solicit any information. That you believe you're going to want to hear and need so that Dr. Lucas can incorporate that into. Presentation to us in two weeks, so Dr. Lucas, potentially if we send that specific request out to each board member. So it's on the radar and can easily reply to.
Absolutely, yes, ma'am.
Just one thought, I know with the governor's announcement of the. Rate increase for all of the teachers statewide, just to make that. Specifically known to our residents that that's only the state portion. And that if we're really going to compete with the other districts, we've got to raise the local side as well.
And that would be across the board, it's not like if we're still going to be the lowest in the county and that's.
Yeah, it's a great point, I appreciate you bringing that up, that will.
One thing I would want to make sure that we explain is that I saw one suggestion that an important live computer decided to restart, so I can't get to the slide. But one of the suggestions by some of the people in the committee were to raise the tax rate by point, whatever it was. An explanation as to why that's not an efficient answer is to solving the problems that we're going to come.
Mean, in other words, the, there's a slide right there, so.
Debate factor, like scenario four, some of the committee suggested that would be there.
Yeah, we gave them a range of options from twenty cents to the ultimate, there was point three, six, nine, seven. And so I'm I'm think your question is, why wouldn't we reduce it, why wouldn't we? Would which of those amounts would make the most sense?
And maybe I misunderstood the slide, but I thought that there's, so there were seventy two point five percent of people had said that that's not right.
The highest amount, yeah.
Seventy two percent said, okay.
Also, I think. I would want, I think that the community would want to see it in in some like situational as well, like. Giving them real numbers and if, you know, giving it as this is how much we can talk about it in small. Percentage, you know, incentive, but let's talk about it as if your total tax. Rate with this, let's look at what that would increase. Total payment by.
Yeah, bring that back.
And so to follow up on that, some of the comments I heard from the committee afterwards. Was the people that voted for that point three or thirty cent increase that under the green scenario for versus these. Thirty seven or thirty six point nine percent increase, some of the reasoning behind that was because we also put up on each of those. Options what the increase in your annual taxes would be based on that increase in the rate. And so that thirty cent increase equated to roughly a hundred dollars for the average. Assessment in the district or the average taxpayer in the district. So once you bumped up to the the thirty seven cents, then it went up to like, I think it was maybe a hundred and twenty five dollars. And so I think some of those people, some of the comments I heard was. They felt like they wanted to keep it in that hundred dollar increase range for the average taxpayer in the district. And so that was just some of the.
And this is just my thought, is the average, when you said average, did it give numbers for that or is it just saying average taxpayer? Like, I'd like to see, I I think I would see it more generally, like. Like I'd like to see, I I think I would see it more generally, like break down the average taxpayer's normal payment like. This, you know, this side or this this side home or this a normal family of four or break it to more. So they can see it instead of just thinking average, you might think you're average or you might think you're average, you're you're average at all, you know, so.
Yeah, and so we didn't specifically do that in the second meeting, but we did in the first meeting to say that basically the average. Tax bill for the average assessment in the district was around five hundred and twenty dollars or somewhere in that range. So when you talk about a hundred dollar increase. Um so that's a lot for a five hundred dollar. That's a twenty percent increase.
So I think certainly we've got, you know, potentially if we if the board votes to go in that direction, we're gonna have two stages, right? The first is that the board has to have an understanding of the the need and the result and the confidence of moving forward. Then from there, the district's gonna have to determine the packaging of the message that's sent. Which is certainly where a lot of this comes in, right? What what information are the individual taxpayers going to need to um make it relevant to them? Uh but also to have an understanding of the why. And and to Dr. Wyatt's point, you know, we're we're faced with a couple of different competing scenarios that make it a. Challenging time. One is the state potentially raising that that pay. Um to where folks are gonna say, why do they need another raise if they're already getting one with it without the knowledge of that? The other thing we have going on is the reassessment throughout the state, right? And understanding, well, you know, I my property taxes are already gonna go up because of reassessment. Where the understanding is is Mr. Kellerman presented to the committee is that that is being presented as a cost neutral. Um uh initiative. To where, yes, they're gonna reassess you and you're gonna get a higher property value, but your property rate would also go down. So you're expected on average to pay the same, right? But again, it's got a lot of explanation and a lot of separate factors that are outside of what we already have to explain for us. Not an easy. Yeah, it's definitely with all these other conflicting scenarios, uh it it's definitely not the best time, but unfortunately. It's the necessary. It is the necessary time and you know, it's it's important that. Everybody and everybody in this room understands is we're not asking to go out and buy a new car or buy something new. We just need, this is what the cost of doing business is. Unfortunately, our transportation costs are expected to go up like, what was the number? We about fifty percent? Maybe in the.
Over a three year period and mainly the driver pays the one that's driving that one.
So uh so we're we're looking at some significant expenses uh over the next few years. Anything further from the board for Dr. Lucas? So yes, if we could get that request out to the board and then again, if you could just respond to. Administration with your tear list of things that you would want to see incorporated in or the things that you feel that you need to know. Uh that way we can have a as as productive a conversation as we can to. Thank you, Dr. Lucas.
Thank you.
Right, we're on to six point one board policies, first reading. This is a discussion or interaction. This is typically a discussion item, I believe. Do we have it later in the agenda to vote? Alright, so this is discussion item. Um so we have several policies as procedure, we'll go through each one individually. We will start with um D K C expense authorization slash reimbursements. Discussion from the board on this, Mr. Ralph.
Uh the biggest thing with this one for me is the beginning of the expense reimbursement paragraph. Because the policy in general, including the lead in is talking about attendance at an event. And that first two sentence talks about ordering something, having it delivered to your house, things like that. So it's not related to the overall policy, so.
So, yeah, so it looks like the policy may would potentially encompass all of this. Um so potentially we need a different lead in, some different breakout for.
I didn't have a chance to, but I thought that we have travel reimbursement policies as well. They even references to the district travel policy, D K C A. So there, I I'm I'm, I thought that because for example, when we go to conferences, we are given a copy of that policy instruction about how to submit reimbursements, et cetera. If that's there, then is the substance of this policy should be more related to that um first two lines of that expense reimbursement paragraph. And the rest of it should should be scrapped. So my suggestion will be to pull this until we have the answers on on if we don't have them right now.
And specifically to compare this to.
To any other reimbursement possibly have related to travel, yeah. Because if all these things are already covered in D K C A, then um it should be overhauled for.
Anything that's. Like like the first.
Understood. And typically, if I may, uh typically this covers all the stuff that's that's not covered in the travel policy. So we get lots of teachers that purchase items for their classroom and things like that that request reimbursement for those. And so that's where a lot of this kind of fits in. And then we also have certain specialists, whether it's psychologists or speech pathologists that. That move between the schools and the district that we provide mileage reimbursement and things like that. Um so. So then, I mean, that's that's fine. If that's the case, then I would suggest breaking this down so it has a travel section and then a section related to. Infant purchases for classrooms and everything. Because right now, just that sentence is kind of stuck in the middle of a overall travel reimbursement policy.
Yeah. Mr. Calvin, you good and clear on that?
Uh, yeah, I think so. You're talking, it would be very bottom, wasn't it? Where.
Well, so my main thing when when after Mr. Ralph brought this up, usually the format of the policies. When we have it like this to where there's different sections, typically this paragraph is like a lead in, an overarching statement. Um and then it's broken down into sections. This overarching statement is a completely different topic, I believe. Than the others. So if the content in that lead in paragraph should be in this policy. Then we potentially need a separate overarching statement in that to be broken out into a bold section.
Okay.
Agree. Anything else on this one? Alright, move on to G A personnel goals. Discussion on G A. Alright, see none move to G B E B C gifts to and solicitations by staff, discussion on this policy. Let's see, none move on to G B G staff welfare protection. Discussion on this policy. That uh just to note that the title should be staff welfare slash protection. I think we have staffs welfare protection slash protection. It should just be stash staff welfare slash protection. That's that's what that should.
Great, thank you.
Next policy, G B G A staff. Discussion on staff help. So now moving on to G C A certified staff position in discussion of this policy. See now moving to G C B certified staff contracts and compensation. Discussion on G C B.
I just I had one on A and B. I I can't remember whether we said in previous ones. When it says superintendent or designated, whether we were adding that or taking it away.
Think we had agreed to add it. Thank you, Dr. Wyatt. Move on to G C B D certified staff fringe benefit, discussion on this policy. So now we're going to I J instructional resources and materials. And discussion on I J.
Just wondering.
Mrs. Darky.
Uh the little sentence in red. Um I think we should put a comma after superintendent. I think that's kind of a.
Ready for the Mrs. McCloskey?
The first sentence, um. I think there might need to be a comma after funds and after limits.
Could be.
That you can take it out. Such as if you have it there, then.
Sure, if we want to all set it with commas, it's it works. If bring further on I J. So you know, move on to I J L library material selection and adoption. Discussion on I J L. So you know, move on to I J N C school libraries. And discussion with this policy. See none move on to our final policy, K H C.
Is it, is are we getting rid of the school libraries, the first one?
I'm sorry.
You're fine. I just wanted to make sure.
That's an error. That's my fault.
Either way, right, one of them goes away.
Well, this, it should say. It should say resource centers. Media centers and school libraries. I'm sorry.
If we go right by the NE P M. It should say.
Those resource centers slash media centers slash school libraries if we follow the NE P M.
Alright, so we can make that change. Alright, last thing, K H C. Distribution posting promotional materials. Discussion on. K H C. Alright, seeing none. Close discussion, the policies will come back up later in the evening, if not too much later. For a vote, we are on to. Section nine, Mr. Ralph. Section nine personnel regulations, I make a motion, we approve resolutions in nine point one and nine point two, guys, ready? Emotional floor properly seconded. Any questions or discussion on that motion? Seeing none move to a vote, all those in favor? Any opposed? Any extensions? Motion carries five to zero. Section ten personnel retirements and making motion, resolution ten point one is written. Emotional floor properly seconded. Any questions or discussion on that motion? Here none move to a vote, all those in favor? I, any opposed? Any extensions? Motion carries five to zero. Section twelve personal transfer, I make a motion, we approve resolution twelve point one and twelve point two. Emotional floor properly seconded. Any questions or discussion on that motion? You know, to move to a vote, all those in favor? Any opposed? Any extensions? Motion carries five to zero. Section fourteen personnel employment, I make a motion, we approve resolutions fourteen point one through fourteen point six. Emotional floor properly seconded. Any questions or discussion on that motion? See none move to a vote, all those in favor? Any opposed? Any extensions? Motion carries five to zero. Section sixteen, I make a motion, we approve resolution sixteen point one through sixteen point seven. Emotional floor properly seconded. Any questions or discussion on that motion? Seeing none move to a vote, all those in favor? Any opposed? Any extensions? Motion carries five to zero. Section twenty personnel appointments, I make a motion, we approve resolution twenty point one. Emotional floor properly seconded. Any questions or discussion on that motion? Seeing none will move to a vote, all those in favor? I, any opposed? Any extensions? Motion carries five to zero. Section twenty two other business, I make a motion, we approve resolution twenty two point one, school choice. Emotional floor properly seconded. Any questions or discussion on that motion? Seeing none move to a vote, all those in favor? I, any opposed? Any extensions? Motion carries five to zero. Standing with section two other twenty two other business, I make a motion, we approve resolution twenty two point two, bid acceptance W T chip in middle school adds. Emotional floor properly seconded. Any questions or discussion on that motion? So I just had a couple of things, Carl. Uh this proposed vendor. Have they? Done any of our other work or they won the awards for?
They have not done any of our other work, but they did they did win the award for uh North.
Okay.
And when researching, they do all work up Christine, it's cool, they're shaking up there and they're very pleased about.
Okay, so they'll be doing North before they are getting to this one. And. These. Work there, just my eyes, so uh forty six thousand square feet of the uh E P D M roof. Is that, so that's everything that has not been touched. Recently. And so I noticed it says uh. Received new metal coping gutters and downspouts. So gutter and downspouts, has that been more over there or other? And is there anything different about this one that?
Just a change of the age of this.
Okay. Very cool. Uh that's all I had. Seeing nothing further, we move to a vote, all those in favor? I, any opposed? Any extensions? Motion carries five to zero. Uh second point four other business financial reports, I make a motion, we approve resolution twenty four point one, the financial report for December had presented to you. I motion the floor properly seconded. Any questions or discussion on that motion? Let's see, none will move to a vote, all those in favor? Any opposed? The extensions? Motion carries five to zero. Standing with section twenty four other business financial reports, I make a motion, we approve resolution twenty four point two financial. Yeah, financial position report and funding budget as presented to you. Emotional floor properly seconded. Any questions or discussion on that motion?
The question is whether you get verification on that number, which one? Yeah, the new, uh I already uploaded the new file, so the seven oh six was the correct number. They all match now. Great.
Thank you, Kirk. Any additional discussion? Seeing none move to a vote, all those in favor? Any opposed? Any extensions? Motion carries five to zero. And finally, section twenty five other business board policies, I make a motion, we approve resolution twenty five point one, board policies, first reading as modified during discussion. Emotional floor properly seconded. Any questions or discussion on that motion? Seeing none move to a vote, all those in favor? Any extensions? Motion carries five to zero. Thank you, Mr. Ralph. Thank you, Mrs. Starkey. We're on to section twenty six board reports. And other items, twenty six point one, good of the order opportunity for board members to address any topics not covered elsewhere on the agenda. Floor is open. Just want to congratulate Mr. Lovin. He's gonna be retiring from the Air Force here, Air Force Reserves pretty soon, so congratulations. Eighty years? Um I will just say, uh so Mrs. Starky and I were two board members that were involved with the school finance committee. Um so it was a a pleasure being involved in that and seeing the rallying of our community and our staff and our administration. Everybody was there um and uh Dr. Lucas's and Mr. Kellerman's leadership through that, so just appreciate that. It was uh great to get the open candid feedback from some community members. Um and glad that they um. Refused to hold back on that, right? That they gave it to us uh because it was very worthwhile and and will help steer us where we need to go. Which is exactly what we were looking for, so. Um and then I'll I'll also say, so thanks to everybody that was involved with that. Uh I'll also say I got um the uh. Ben mentioned it, Mr. Black mentioned it, the future ready committee uh that Mrs. Katie Comages and and Mr. James Dick. Uh put on on Tuesday, that first meeting. Um it was again a great discussion from members of our. Uh staff community. Um and you know, after the meeting, uh Mr. Black was mentioning to Dr. Lucas and I. How it's great post pandemic that we're getting back to this opportunity of having these types of sessions where staff can get together. And share ideas and express whatever it is they need to express. So you know, um that was a good showing and hopefully there's a lot more of that going on. Um with meetings that, you know, I don't get invited to, so. But anyway, thanks to everyone that was involved in that. Look forward to the next meeting as well. Alright, see nothing else. I don't believe we have a need for executive session, Dr. Lucas. No, sir. And board member have a need. Alright, with that, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment. All right, with that, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment. Emotional floor properly seconded, any questions or discussion on that motion? Seeing none, move to a vote. All those in favor? Any opposed? Extensions, motion carries five and zero. I will stand adjourned until our next meeting, which is Tuesday. February ninth, back here in the district office. So thank you, B C.